Start the meeting six o'clock on Monday, April 28th. This is the Bennington Select Board. I'd like everyone to join us if they will in Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm gonna start with something a little new. I want to introduce the Board. Bennington Select Board to my left, far left is Michael Keen.
Good evening.
And our Vice Chair Sharon Brush. My name is Greg Van Houten. James Carroll. We have Justin Corcoran, our Town Manager Stu Hurd. I'm here to Bermuda's recording. I'd like to invite everyone to come down here to the firehouse on the second and fourth Monday of every month and at 6:00 PM unless there's some other issue that keeps us out of here. We're gonna start with the minutes from April 14th. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
On second.
Second. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor? That's unanimous, two absent. We're missing John McFadden and Tom Jacobs tonight, by the way, so. Okay, are there any citizens who'd like to come on and speak about anything that is not on the agenda tonight?
You get warrants first.
Oh, I'm sorry, warrants, thank you. That's why we have Sharon here. Any questions on the warrants for Stu?
None.
From the Board. Michael, Sharon?
I had a couple of questions.
Okay.
Stu, on page five. Did we forget to pay our power bill one month? That's like double the amount that we usually pay.
I'm sorry, what is the question?
Green Mountain Power.
On page five.
It may be, it may be two monthly charges. They've changed their billing for those of you who haven't noticed. And so it may be that just because of the way the timing came in that we have extra here.
I did think they raised the rates like that. And the second one is on page seven. That Northeast Woodland Training, Pro Saw Training, is that for which department?
I'm sorry, Northeast? Okay, thank you, Ms. Shuffler. Good thing someone's here. Yes, the Northeast Woodland Training is actually a chainsaw training. Every Public Works employee is signed up to take this. It is one of the required trainings that we have on an annual basis, and this is a very, very good one.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
James?
Yeah, on page seven, just something that is, it's just curious, it's not for a lot of money, but pedometer batteries.
Yes, we are in, in the beginnings of a wellness challenge for our employees. It's one of the things that we do with some of the wellness funds that we have set aside over the years, and we provide for those who don't have them pedometers, and for those who have them but the batteries are dead, we buy the batteries for them.
Justin?
Nothing, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go to citizens. Are there any citizens who wish to address the Board or the Town this evening? Okay. There's no one being recognized, so we're gonna move to the next item is the Bennington County Regional Commission. Talking about the Kosher Drive Bike and Pedestrian Improvements, this has been up a few times. Dan, are you starting this off?
I'm just gonna get things started and then Mark and the consultants can do the heavy lifting tonight. Just a quick kind of recap of where we are. Town of Bennington received a federal earmark several years ago to look at improving pedestrian and bicycle safety in the Kosher Drive vicinity, in particular, the crossing of Route 7, Kosher Drive and Route 7, North Side Drive area. We worked with the Select Board a few months ago to get, to get the go-ahead to hire a consultant to do some conceptual designs for us, looking at that corridor, how we could improve it, make it safer for pedestrians and cyclists in that vicinity. And we hired the Bennington County Regional Commission to oversee that process for us. They did an RFP and hired a consultant. And what you'll see this evening is their conceptual design for the improvements there. What we're looking for tonight, no final decisions, just kind of a, we would like, if you guys agree, a consensus, a general consensus that we're headed in the right direction. We still have to work out some cost issues, and we'll be back to you folks for that, because once you make a final decision to move forward, you're making a real commitment to begin spending those funds, and if you decide for no good reason to not proceed, then there is a possibility that those funds would be recaptured that have already been spent. So it's a big decision. We want to make sure you guys are well informed before you make that final approval on the conceptual design. So we're not really looking for final approval tonight, but we really want to make sure that you think we're headed in the right direction. And we will be back probably within the next four weeks to try to finalize your approval if that's the direction you think you'd like to go. So I'm gonna let Mark Anders with the Regional Commission introduce the consultants and give you another information you might think isn't necessary right now.
Hi, my name is Mark Anders, and I'm the Transportation Planner for the Bennington County Regional Commission and also the local project manager for this scoping study. And so I'd like to introduce Michael Allen of Bein Planning and Design and Mark Arbers of URS Corporation. They are the consultants who have developed this conceptual plan, and they're gonna explain the plan.
Thank you, Mark. Sure. Happens automatically. I understand I have to speak in the mic, so I'll stand here. If I'm blocking anybody's view, I hope this is getting picked up by the microphone. As was explained, this is mostly about pedestrian crossing of Kosher Drive and Route 7. There's been a great deal of interest in the fact that this isn't really a safe pedestrian crossing right now. And if we look at the map here on the left, the reason this is, this project is very important is because we have about a 2.3 mile high corridor, which there's no safe east-west pedestrian crossing. On the east side, we have, you know, Mount Anthony Union Middle School, the high school, Grace Christian School, just to name the schools, for instance, and a lot of retail and commercial and residential on the other side of this, of this sort of Route 7 barrier. And Kosher Drive represents the only real potential crossing area in this, in this 2.3 mile area. And it's commonly used by students, as some of these photographs will show, who are walking to and from school, as well as other people not using the school route, bicyclists and so forth. And especially with some of these guardrails and so forth, it presents a real hazard to, especially to a lot of the children. Here we see some more children walking along. There's very little safe room for them to walk, because as you see to the left, the embankment steeps, you know, it's very steep off to the side, so they only have a narrow two or three foot strip to walk in. And you have conditions where you have large vehicles, buses and trucks and so forth turning, creating a very, you know, unsafe condition, pinch points and so forth. And I know if I were a parent and seeing my kids walking here, I'd be a little bit, a little bit concerned. So we've been working for some time on some different design concepts. This is the design that was eventually selected as the preferred design and one that we recommended also. Just as an overview, the design itself would go from the Aldi CVS driveway on the other side of the railroad tracks and extend east over US Route 7, over Furnace Brook, and then continue over to East Road where it would connect up with the existing multi-use path there. It's about a 10-foot wide asphalt path. Sort of take you through it right now. On the left side of the screen, you have the Aldi's driveway. The design that we've developed with URS and BRCRC was to provide a, and it's highlighted in green here, a nice wide, 10-foot wide buffer strip that's landscaped or otherwise, provides a separation between the roadway and the sidewalk. And then you would have a nice 10-foot wide sidewalk that would be on the other side of that. So you have a nice separation between the road and so forth. We'd like that, that strip between the sidewalk and the road to be landscaped in some manner if we can, but that's up for discussion. In order to achieve this, much of the work that would have to be done is some new infill to bring the grade up to the point where it would support the sidewalk, because as I pointed out, it slopes down rather steeply from the road. That sidewalk would continue up to Route 7, where we're recommending a number of changes. One, most basic is a, is a crosswalk, a very obvious crosswalk there. Two is the center median, which divides the north and southbound traffic. We're looking to widen that to about 10 feet, so that it creates an area of refuge for people crossing the street. If there's not enough time for whatever reason and traffic starts moving again, they have a safe spot to stop in the middle of the road where they're not likely to be hit by vehicles heading either direction. And also, in concert with that, right now existing, there are four lanes coming down south when you come down the bottom of the hill on Route 7. We were recommending to eliminate the dedicated right turn lane only that would turn right onto Kosher, North Side Drive, for the reason that it would shorten the distance that pedestrians would need to cross, thereby shortening the time it takes to cross, thereby shortening the amount of delay that it would cause to traffic. This concept was taken to V-Trans to see, they conducted a traffic study to see if the, if this lane removal would be acceptable to them. They studied it for some time and felt that it would not adversely impact the overall traffic, especially considering some of the new traffic flows since the bypass and so forth have been built. So overall, some considerable changes there. And also, the third element there was there would be a push-button activation for pedestrians to cross. That way, for most of the time, when there aren't any pedestrians looking to cross, traffic would flow as normal. It optimizes the vehicle flow. However, if somebody is waiting, they would push the button that would activate a slightly delayed traffic light sequence that would give them more time to cross. So traffic is, that's waiting at that light would only have to be delayed a few more seconds if and when a pedestrian happens to be there. Continuing on a little bit farther to the, to the east, the 10-foot wide landscape buffer strip, as well as the 10-foot wide sidewalk would continue to the Grace Christian driveway where we would have a crosswalk. And here, because of the crossing at Furnace Brook, there's a relatively narrow bridge at that location. We looked at a lot of different options about how to get pedestrians to the other side of the water. This was the most cost-effective, in that we would taper down the sidewalk, down to a five-foot sidewalk at that location, and it would come up and cross the bridge using the width that's already available. So we're not modifying the width of the bridge at all, but we're providing a raised sidewalk curb for them. In that location, in order to accommodate that, we're just tapering down the width of the overall vehicle travel lanes just at that location, down to 12 feet. Then, once the sidewalk reaches the east side of the bridge, it would then bend away from the roadway again and taper back out to its full 10-foot width and continue on, past Performance Drive, Car Dealership, and continuing on. And here, here we kept the sidewalk just inside of the right-of-way, so it's not on any sort of, any private property. There's the industrial building that's at this location. In this design, we've shown it the sidewalk only within the right-of-way, not on any of their property, which would mean that the buffer strip, the landscape buffer strip, would be much narrower at this location, approximately three or four feet. We would prefer ideally, perhaps if, if they were willing, an easement could be granted by that property owner to allow the sidewalk to extend onto their property. And that way, the continuous 10-foot buffer strip could be carried on throughout the whole car, throughout the whole corridor. And finally, at the end, the 10-foot sidewalk matches up with the 10-foot multi-use path that's coming down from the high school or the middle school, and that would complete the connection. Overall, the amount of project within the state right-of-way is about half of that that's in the town right-of-way. The total project is about $646,000 based on the engineer's cost estimates. Mark is going to talk to you about some, some different strategies revolving that. Overall, though, I think that bang for the buck, this is a very important and would make a huge improvement to pedestrian connections, and especially for the kids. And I think bang for the buckets, it would be a great, a great improvement. So I would highly recommend it. Mark, do you want to just speak briefly about?
So this is, this is the budget, and the original federal earmark was $490,000. We spent some of that money on the scoping study. And the labor materials estimate is $431,000 with a pretty generous 25% contingency. And of course, once you move on to the next phase, it's the design phase, there'll be some expenses with that. And construction administration, you have to have construction inspectors on site, so that's another $107,000. So the subtotal is $646,000, bringing the total project cost to $711,000. So we will have a budget gap of $221,000, which sounds like a lot, but one thing we've talked about with RJ Jolly, the Town House Superintendent, is that we could, the town could actually build a, a simpler part of the project between Performance Drive and East Road, and that would save a lot of money. It would save $105,000. Now, it's a little bit counterintuitive, but because that would not be done as a federal project, the out-of-pocket expense would be less than $50,000, because when you don't build it as a federal project, it's a much, much cheaper project to build. So, do you have anything to add, Dan?
I guess this is really just an example of how we might get closer to meeting the budget. We need to, as I mentioned, get back together with V-Trans, who has committed to working with us to, to fund that, that gap. We think that the best way forward is to work together, where the town agrees to fund some of that gap and the state agrees to fund some of that gap. Again, we're not asking for your approval of this particular method for, for dealing with that, but we're just giving you some examples of where we're headed to try to get creative and try to make this project feasible. We could also reduce the scope, if necessary, to focus more singularly on the crossing, but we really think that as a whole, this, this project should be done from, from East Road to the Aldi intersection, Aldi CVS driver intersection. So we're not asking tonight for any approval of this particular budget. We want you to know what the numbers are. We want you to know what we're up against. We want you to know that we're gonna be working with V-Trans over the next few weeks to try to figure out a way forward on this. But what we really would like to have this evening is just a general consensus that the design makes sense and that you'd like us to sit down with V-Trans and get serious about making the project happen. So, anything else, Mark?
Is there any questions?
Michael, do you have any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, just as I looked over the documents, I, I read this particular, particular phrase in the, the paragraph on the V-Trans scoping study acceptance. It said, "V-Trans did a traffic study which found that the Route 7 Kosher Drive intersection would have an acceptable level of service if the proposed changes were made." What does an acceptable level of service define as?
Uh, there's a certain amount of delay here at every intersection, or civilized intersection that you go through, so.
Could, could you come up to the microphone, please? I'm think, we're not picking you up on a microphone, you could just come up. Thanks.
When you exceed a certain threshold of delay, then it becomes technically an unacceptable level of service. So they grade intersections A, B, C, D, and F. F is failing, obviously. So this one here will be an acceptable level of service, given the fact that the peak hour is in the morning when there's not a lot of pedestrian traffic, so the pedestrians would not be really causing a lot of delay to the peak hour traffic.
Do you guys do simulations on this? How do you, how do you run that through? How do you run those scenarios?
Well, the traffic engineers at V-Trans would model this. They have counted the traffic. Then they run a program with the traffic signal to see how it, how the traffic behaves. Thank you.
One of the concerns has always been the truck traffic through that intersection to the manufacturing plant, so the size of the, the intersection and the, the rates with which the trucks go through has always been a priority there. So I know that they've been concerned about that, not just the number of cars through, but making sure that the industrial traffic gets through there. Sharon, do you have anything?
Just a comment. I, you know, this is something we've talked about for a long time, and I certainly think it's a worthwhile project, not only for the safety of the, the children and the citizens that use it, but I think aesthetically, it would improve that whole stretch of road, highway. That's all.
James?
Just a clarification on the easements that you're talking about. Would you use eminent domain? And we're talking about a long stretch of this project that would intrude 20 feet approximately on each of the separate properties.
It's designed exclusively on town and state right, existing town and state right-of-way. We do not.
So would there be any loss of?
We don't anticipate any, any easements, except for possibly, as Mr. Allen mentioned, if we can negotiate something with the industrial user command composites in the east side of the project, we might be able to push the multi-use path a little bit further away from the road, but we have designed it so that that's not necessary. There are no permanent easements required with this design.
Would there be any loss of, for lack of a better phrase, highway traffic area or the road surface?
Actually, only as, as they mentioned, the only roadway surface lane that would be affected is the Route 7 South dedicated right turn lane is projected to be eliminated, but that's the only impact to the, to the roadway surface. And as we had mentioned, the, the level of service was studied by V-Trans, and even assuming the worst-case scenario where you'd have a pedestrian coming through there every cycle, the levels of service were shown to be within acceptable range.
Okay, thanks. Justin?
Very much in favor of the project. One concern I have is the $221,500 funding shortfall that we're looking at here. Scope of it, from where it starts and ends, I think is, is important. The whole, whole stretch of road is dangerous. I've been in favor of this once it first got brought in front of us three years ago. I'd like to see it fund to fruition. How we're gonna look to fund the rest of that is, is something that scares me a little bit. One thing that I'm wondering, not the scope of the entire project, but the width of the pathways itself. We're talking about a 10-feet green space and 10 feet of, of multi-use path. I mean, just looking to cut that space down in any way from, you know, maybe 10 to, to whatever numbers, instead of 10 and 10, whether you're looking at a 6 and 6 or 5 and 5, is that something that could save us a substantial amount of money, where we still have a functional, usable path, but we're not looking at a 200-plus thousand, $100,000 budget shortfall?
We could see some savings, and we're gonna be looking at that if, if, if V-Trans is not able to help us fund that gap. We could probably go down to as little as eight feet and still be okay for a multi-use path. We are trying to accommodate bicycles and pedestrians, so that's why we're not simply going with the five feet. It would also cut down on the fill, although we feel, given with the conversations we had with RJ, that we may have fill available at our discretion at no cost. So that will bring that budget number down as well.
Why is the green space designed to be as wide as the path itself?
Well, just as far as the path itself goes, the recommended width for a multi-use path, minimal recommended width is, is 10 feet. In sort of dire circumstances, they recommend you can go down to eight feet, and often 12 feet is, is okay. It's even better. And as far as the green space, the 10-foot wide green space goes, that would allow for big, healthy street trees if the town wanted to do that. It's more separation from the traffic, so it would be a more comfortable user experience. And I think it would probably look a little bit better, but that is a generous, that's a very generous green space width, so.
And I don't know cutting down on that saves us any money, but I know, I know a couple hundred thousand dollar, you know, gap in funding is significant. And if you're gonna ask me to ask V-Trans for some money to do something, I'd be asking them to fix North Side Drive before I ask them to, you know, to contribute and build in this path. So I want the path to succeed. I want it to be there. I think we need it, but I think we need to find a way to do it without having a couple hundred thousand dollar gap.
And we're gonna look to try to decrease that gap. The, the one thing that we are, that's on our, in our favor here is that this is part of an overall, part of a much larger project to improve that corridor that V-Trans has already committed to doing someday. So we're hoping that, and we've gotten indications, that they'll agree to do this portion of that much larger project with V-Trans funds. And actually, that project, which was identified as a federal intersection project, is a, is 100% federal money. So if we can convince them that it makes sense to go ahead with this portion of the project, we may be able to access V-Trans funds, 100% V-Trans funds, under the auspices of that previously approved project, which is now several years old, probably 12 years old. So that's why we're not asking you today to make any decisions about money, because we really want to get V-Trans to commit to us what exactly they're willing to put into the project. And we also believe even that $50,000 out-of-pocket number for this section for Performance Drive to East Road could be brought down a little bit more. That, that assumes that we're paying rent for equipment, which we probably don't have to, we may have the equipment ourselves. It assumes a lot of costs that we may be able to even bring down further. As you, as Mark mentioned, whenever you do a federal project, costs go way up. So anything that we can do brings those costs down, so we'll have to negotiate with the state to see what we can do as a town, what they can do with their state crews, and what we might have to hire a consultant to do, or hire a construction contractor to do, which is highest cost scenario. So that's, what we really want to do is, and it sounds like we're getting consensus here, but I want to make sure that the alignment is good, the general path is good, we can play around with costs and, and get back to you for, for approval.
And going back, Dan, if I may, you, we, this is a 10-foot path, which makes it a multi-use path, so that it removes bicycle traffic from the roadway, so that the, the roadway doesn't have that burden on it, and it can all, everything, all pedestrian bicycle activity can happen on that pathway.
Absolutely.
Okay. Michael, do you have another question?
Yeah, and it's really tied into what you just mentioned, Greg. What is, in terms of the width of these pathways and the greenways, what is best practice? And what do you trade off if you try to scrunch that down?
Well, I think for, for the amount of volume we'll experience on this, I think 10 feet is really pretty good. That's about what the current path is on East Road, which works really well. You know, historically, these paths are, have been made too narrow, and towns and cities have gone back and made them wider. They turn out to be much more popular than is often anticipated, and they get very crowded, and, you know, if two bikes are going like this and there's somebody on foot, it, it actually does get kind of crowded. But they want any story works great, and so we're really just trying to kind of mimic what's, continue that path along Kosher Drive. I think that's really the goal, goal of this.
Thank you.
Sure.
I just had another question. Between the green space and the road, is there gonna be curbing, or is that just gonna be like level with the, the street like it is now, you know, like it is now?
Do you want to talk about?
Is there gonna be a defined curb?
It's, well, that's, we had envisioned it being, I'm sorry.
It's okay, we just want everybody to hear.
We had envisioned it being a curved section through there, so that there would be some sort of curb there, and then, and then that landscaping and everything on the pathway would trend toward the street, and then it would all trend back out to the north. So.
I'm just thinking about distracted drivers and if they happen to, you know, move to the right-hand side, if there's gonna be something there that will stop them, or if they'll just have free rein to go right up into the.
Well, the way we had budgeted it was to be a curved area.
Okay, okay.
And that's part of the function of the 10-foot of green space as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. It's also a margin of safety.
I also want to point out, you mentioned it, but it doesn't get a lot of attention, the, the plan also shows a crosswalk from this walkway to the shopping center, the Bennington Plaza, right? So at, across, yeah, across from the school entrance, it does give you safe pedestrian access, a passive crosswalk into the, into the shopping center, correct?
That's, that's actually outside of the scope of what we asked the consultants to do, but when we were doing, when I was doing pedestrian counts at the intersection, I noticed a lot of people were walking along and running across the road there.
Yeah.
So we thought it would be good to just show in the conceptual drawing that it would be a good idea to put that in, but that's not part of the.
It's not part of the scope.
This plan, it's not part, it wasn't budgeted. It's not part of the cost estimate, but I think it'd be a really good idea to do that.
Well, yeah, I think, you know, it, it, we almost create an attractive nuisance if we put a pathway there and across the street is a school supply store and a fast food place and children's clothing and.
But I think unfortunately, we can't have a signal intersection there. Is that correct, Stu? Because it's too close to the other intersection?
Actually, I don't know that that is true, Sharon. Years and years ago, back when our forefathers were meeting, Burger King received a permit to locate in that plaza, and part of the condition of the Act 250 permit and the local permit was that if ever a signal was necessary, that they would have to fund it.
Ooh.
Now, the folks at Burger King probably have long forgotten.
Probably.
But that, that could. But that, that could happen. Obviously, the lights would have to be synchronized because you don't have a lot of stacking distance at the main intersection. But we've all seen that the state has been able to synchronize the lights all the way down Northside Drive, so that that works fairly well. This would have to be included in that, which drives the cost of a signalization there.
I thought at one point, and this was years ago, that we talked about a signal there being too close to the intersection, the Kosher Drive intersection.
A standalone signal would be too close because you don't have the stacking distance. But if it was synchronized with the remainder of the lights on Northside Drive, it could work.
Okay.
So as a pedestrian crossing, even a passive crossing, you know, a sign with a flasher or something like that to alert?
You're not going to get traffic to stop or maybe in some cases even slow down.
Well, that'd be, that's a good thing. I'm glad you put that on there because that's something that I'd be interested to hear about. So do I, do I have any objections to a consensus here?
Nope.
Okay, then I think we give you a consensus to move forward. If we get this project for $50,000, I think it's a pretty good deal. I like the creativity of it. If we can do better than that, that's great.
Well, like I said, we'll be back to you. This gives us the go-ahead to sit down with V-Trans and say, the select board's behind doing this project. We need to figure out a way to make it cost-effective for everybody. It would be very helpful having your consensus behind that, so we appreciate it.
Michael?
Yeah, what do you think that timeframe would be?
We're, I told Mark that we'd like to be back here within the month. We're going to tell, we're going to ask V-Trans to look closely at what they can do and make some commitments so we can move forward. No promises, but at least we'll give you an update within that period about what V-Trans says.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the water system improvements proposed.
Nope, it's this.
I thought we were doing that after seven.
No, after six.
You want to do Chad now or before seven or after seven?
Well, Chad's here. We've also got Jason Dolmitch getting ready to set up.
Yeah. You want to do it before the water?
However you folks.
Okay. I thought you wanted me to tuck it in after seven.
I did want you to tuck it in after.
Oh, sorry. That's my mistake then.
Well, Terry's here. Let's do that one. And we're going to do the water and system improvements proposals.
Just a brief introduction to this. At the last meeting and several meetings ago, you folks asked to see various options that might solve the problem for our water system. What we're going to show you tonight are three different options, all with different costs associated with them. Please remember that when Jason Dolmitch, our engineer, talks about the pressure zones of the community, you will come to understand that there really is only one elevation in that area for the tank and for the pump station to be ideally located. So as I indicated in the memorandum to you, the differences in cost really come from how we get from the pump station to the tank. The tank may, and I'll let Jason take it from here. The tank can have an elevation in different locations along the easterly slopes of Mount Anthony. But we believe we found the ideal location in order to serve the town and, of course, help Southern Mount College meet its needs because they are truly helping us.
So I'm Jason Dolmitch with MSK Engineering and Design, the project engineer for the water system improvements. As Stu mentioned, after the most recent bond vote, we were asked by staff to sort of evaluate our assumptions and to readdress the question of what was the need and then also to make, basically to look and find for, look for cost savings in the, in the design. So going backwards a little bit, just briefly, the need is, the primary need of the project is to address deficiencies in the system that are regulatorily required to be improved by 2018. Essentially, there are two areas of town, what we call the Stonehedge area and then Crescent Hill, about the Marburg Lane area, which are, have insufficient flows during fire flows. I believe we also got to experience that recently with the former Hanes and Keynes Leflamms fire. There were some issues that happened up there because water, essentially, those are the high areas in this. Right now, these facilities are located in this sort of overall downtown zone. And both of these are at an elevation that make the static water pressure significantly lower in these areas just due to vertical elevation. So the, essentially going backwards, the issue that we started looking at in 2009 when we were asked to evaluate how to create a new facility for this area to address these problems was what are the physical areas that are located proximal to these deficient zones that would have sufficient elevation to provide a facility like a water tank and a water tower? So this area shaded in black essentially is the area of, essentially elevation, elevated areas more or less around Mount Anthony that have elevation high enough to supply, to essentially fix these supply needs. And what we wanted to look for with respect to creating a facility was both where is the elevation that's most proximal to those areas so we can create a distribution line? We can make minimal improvements to the distribution line and solve the problem. And then secondarily, where is existing infrastructure available that allows us to access those areas? So we came very quickly down to two parcels, but both because they were as proximal to the facility, to the deficient facility as possible, which essentially this was what we call the Beals property, and then we have Southern Vermont College. As you can see, our distribution line, large distribution line, ends at the intersection of the hospital entrance of Monument Avenue Extension. So the Beals property would both have very little access and was completely privately owned parcel. And it had very little access, physical access, and it also had a great distance to existing water infrastructure. So, and you'll notice when we go and look at, we looked at Southern Vermont College. Here's the line. This is the existing access road. We have a paved, maintained access road that gets us almost to the elevation that we needed to be. So we naturally sort of went in that direction. And that's when we started talking to the college back in 2009 and came to an agreement of a location and a pathway, which we, and as Stuart mentioned, this is essentially, this was, this is the original design that was proposed and that was proposed during the bond vote. This is the proposed water tower, and then we have a proposed pump station down here near Monument Avenue Extension. And if, as Stu mentioned, these facilities are located sort of in the most efficient location as well. The main is right here on Monument Avenue Extension. We have a very short distance from that main to the pump station. There's already a parking lot there with an access road. So we have minimal infrastructure improvement that would support that facility. In the same sense, here's the end of Mansion Drive. This is the parking lot up at Southern Vermont College. And we have actually an access road that goes up to a trail system on Mount Anthony where we proposed to locate the tank. And that, that tank is sort of sheltered. We have minimal visual impacts for the college, and we also are most, at most approximate to the roadways that are there. With the other goal that we have with respect to creating a distribution line to this facility was to allow, give the town as much possible access along a maintained road. So that's why we ended up with this particular layout, was to essentially skirt around the two nodes of the college, college facilities and also basically create this alignment right along the edge of Mansion Drive. So that was sort of the original proposal. It met the needs that we needed and it got us to each of those points. When we were asked to go and look for cost savings, what we did essentially was to look at another option, which would, I said, so if these are the most efficient node locations for these facilities, the straightest line, of course, is the most efficient distribution line. So drawing a line there, we essentially cross across campus and through the pond and then to the, to the pump station. So going through the pond is not viable. We travel to the south of it. We're going behind the, behind the embankment, which would be a difficult construction. And also, we would be near Hunter Hall and some of their facilities. So we pushed north and came through the campus. This, essentially, we ended up with a bit of a cost savings, and we'll go over that matrix right at the end. But you can see we have less, we have a few points in which we have road access to these facilities, but we have fewer of it. Hopefully, in all of our lifetime, they will not be doing many, much maintenance on this distribution line. But there again, those do, needs do arise at some point, and getting out into a field is more difficult than it may right alongside the road. So the other, I was then asked to look at another alternate, which was to follow the existing service road, which, there's a small service road to the, to the east of Mansion Drive, which the college uses intermittently. This actually increased the line length and, or it decreased the line length marginally, but a very small amount, and it increased the overall cost to the college by, also by a marginal amount. So when present, when this was presented to the college, they felt that this was not an acceptable alternative for them. So just going over it briefly, if we look at the original baseline, we have this being the baseline, which meets all the needs that we have. We had the original cost of about $3.2 million split at 2.6 and about $5.85 for the college. And then the second canvas, the sort of the cost savings, it's the least cost alternative, so that's a plus. We end up with about a 10% savings overall for the project, which is about $320,000. The college also sees about a 10% savings as well. It's a less direct route for the infrastructure. And we have, there again, we have some conflicts that we have to deal with with the college infrastructure. If they want to make changes, it'll be a little bit more difficult for them than the others. But there again, we end up with a small, we end up with a reasonable cost savings, something that would be of value to balance out between the drawbacks of the design. And then, like I said, the last alternative, which the college did not accept, they will accept either, either one of these alternates as a partner. This they accepted, they would not accept. There again, we end up with a slightly marginal lesser cost to the town of about $50,000. And then we end up with less, we still have the direct road access. Even though it's proposed along that maintenance road, that road is not maintained to the winter, so we end up with the same problems there. And then lastly, I think, we end up with about $14,000 increase. So there again, marginal cost savings to the town for that proposal, less, less facility management capacity and a marginally, larger increase in cost to the college. So with that, I'll turn it to questions for you.
Jason, can we go back to the slide on the least cost alternative? And could you highlight for us, what is the, where is the shared cost? Where is SVC's cost? I know they're highlighted in color there, but the folks at home may not.
Yep, absolutely. So just quick backpedal backstory for those of, for those of you who don't know, we were approached by the college to, to look at tying on to the town water system due to deficiencies that they had in their own system. And when we had that initial discussion, the, essentially, the cost to construct this purple line here is what would solve their current water deficiency. And that was agreed that the, even though this is going to be ultimately town infrastructure and also is town infrastructure that was designed, starting back in 2009, to solve a town deficiency issue, that because it was going to essentially address their immediate needs or a future need for the town, that we worked out a cost-sharing agreement that would, that would cost share the distribution line and the pump station to the connection at the health center. So this purple line, which is, represents approximately about 45% of the distribution line along with the pump station, would be cost shared by the, by the college and the town. And then the blue line would be the town line. This, this is the, this is the remaining distribution line that would get us up to the tank, which would be covered by the town. And then these orangish lines here represent the connections to the individual services. They would be owned by the college and they would be paid for by the college a hundred percent.
Thank you. Justin, do you have any thing to start with?
Not at the moment, no.
James?
No.
Sharon?
No, I don't have any questions.
Michael?
Oh, don't see, there really aren't any order of magnitude differences available, are there?
No, unfortunately, no. Yeah, we need a, we need a facility. It needs to be elevated. Really looking for another alternative, we would then be looking at spending money on infrastructure, physical infrastructure away from the distribution line. So the, we sort of minimize the impacts, yeah. We can see a 10% savings with this option, but we're not going to save half.
Thank you. No more questions?
Thank you. So the proposal there is coming across, it looks like you're coming across in front of the mansion, across that sprawling lawn there, correct?
Yes, yes.
So there's a good portion of the year that would not be terribly accessible. Is that correct?
Really, yeah. From, I mean, from this point to roughly in front of the cafeteria entrance would, would be difficult to get at. It's not impossible. I mean, there's a, you know, the college has, you can see there's a sewer main here that runs down.
Okay.
They, like I said, generally speaking, these should not be, the distribution line itself should not be something that they would be accessing a lot.
My concern is, in saving 10%, are we spending 20% down the line? So I guess my question is to Terry, what are the service expectations for something with the modern, with modern construction and a line like that? What would we know?
Whereas, aren't we able to service that?
Yeah, what, how often would you expect to? And if you did, what would be the nature of it?
I don't see that as being a big issue until we get down the roadways. I don't think maybe forty or fifty years.
So you could be looking at replacement issues, you think, more than maintenance?
Certainly maintenance issues. You know, the way, like the weather we had this year, a lot of frost movement, seeing a little more breakage. But I think with the pipe that we're using today, nickel iron, if properly installed, properly embedded, will probably, you know, last a long, long time. And I'm saying fifty years is a reasonably, I think, conservative pipe rate.
Okay. That's, then my second question is more on the service side. We, and obviously, we've all had conversations about this since. And with that service, we're looking at, it's not just the house pressures, but also talking about fire service up there and service to the hospital as well, correct?
Yeah, and I can elaborate a little bit more on the way that we designed this facility. So I talked a little bit about the primary concern, which is essentially to address the regulatory issues associated with the temporary operating permit that you guys are working under with the state. We saw this as a prime opportunity to, you know, increase the capacity of the, the ability of the system to respond. So the, this, this particular pump station is designed to draw water from, actually, I'm going to change slides here. So right now, if you cut a line down Monument Avenue Extension, all of these facilities are in what I'm going to call the yellow zone or the central zone. There's a 12-inch main that just, that essentially loops water service to the hospital right now. The hospital would see about a 10% or a 10-pound increase in pressure, which during high flows and fire flows inside the central zone, the hospital does see a decrease in pressure. It's not a decrease that goes below regulatory thresholds, but nevertheless, they do see some fluctuations in water pressure. This would stabilize that significantly because we'd be adding about a, we were adding a three-quarter million gallon tank to that facility and would essentially give them ample service. and would essentially give them ample service. The other, the other thing that we did because we felt we could use it is that when, so this is where the tank is located. When it's designed to draw water away from this part of the pressure zone and then, and pump it up to the tank, which essentially redistributes it down into this zone at a higher pressure. What we also did, though, was that if, say, there was a fire in Old Bennington or any portion of this area that were to draw a large amount of water, we have what's called a pressure sustaining valve inside the pump station. If you think about, you've got a backflow preventer in your house, what that does, it prevents water from take, if there is a quick drop in pressure inside the distribution network, it stops water from flowing. It stops water from flowing out of your house and into the distribution network. What a pressure sustaining valve does is essentially generally stops water from flowing backwards, keeps water inside the system unless there's a catastrophic drop in water pressure, at which point it'll open up and that tank will suddenly not just be a part of this facility, but also a part of the central network. So if there is a large drop in this area that causes water pressure at this point to drop, this tank will service that. And that, generally speaking, is, aside from water main breaks, catastrophic events like fire, this will aid that by adding the 3/4 million gallons. Right now, they only have about $250,000 in this location.
And in a case like we experienced with the remnants of Irene, when we were trying to get water to these areas, I know the hospital was one of the points of concern at that point. How does this address that for distributing?
It's more of a short-term solution for that kind of a scenario. We would still have to rely pretty heavily on morning spring to pump water up during the nighttime hour. We're only talking a 3/4 of a million gallon tank here, and our daily demand is just shy of 2 million gallons. So if we had, I think Jason said, some sort of a catastrophic event, then we would give it some time to adjust to that. But it probably isn't going to be a long-term type of solution. However, in saying that, here a couple of weeks ago, we had some pretty heavy rain and snow melt coming off of Winter. And we had to shut our filtration plant down. We physically could not create the water coming out of Old Struck. And there was a timing issue where one of our pumps at Willapamp came on earlier than expected. And what happened was, is we threw down, because we weren't drawing from the plant, we overthrew the system from the demand of the system itself, plus what we were taking out of the system and pumping at Willapamp. People in the Stonehead area, people in the Margaret Lane, all the way down as far as Pine Circle East and Monument Avenue up on the circle, they had very low or if no water. It was about a 15-minute overlap, but that's all it took in order to see those areas. That's how close I think they are kind of on the end. So if this day, and this system had been in place, that pressure sustaining valve was tall, that drop in pressure in the system died and allowed that kind of overlap for that half an hour period until morning spring could catch up with it. So, I mean, we're going to be addressing a specific issue here from those higher elevations on the south end of town. But in doing so, I think there are a lot of causes that can happen on the south and the western side of town from having this tank there.
Thank you. Board members?
No.
Great. Stuart?
I know we talked at, I think, the last meeting or the meeting before that about pursuing a second bond vote in July, as early as July. I had a brief meeting with the town clerk today, and he is suggesting that, given the BSD budget vote coming up in May, and then the ballots will be pretty much ready come July for the primary, and the primary takes place in the end of August, he's now recommending that we look to have this vote in September, which falls within the guidelines the state have provided for us in order to maintain our funding scenario. But it's not July. It gives us a little bit more time, perhaps, to educate the public, to get the information out as to why this is a very beneficial project for the town. And, but he would prefer to see that vote come in September between the primary and the major election.
And we would have a little more time to put together some ideas on how we'd pay for it going down the road with that as well, correct?
We have been working on that. As you, well, you may not know yet, because we haven't really gotten that information out to you, but the proposed water budget that we are going to be presenting to you next month in May is up only 3.1%. And it includes all of the necessary depreciation to begin to take into account this project, as well as to meet the other needs of our improvements within the system on North Side Drive. So we're, I think we're, we're going to see our water budget increases start to level out and become more of a cost of living issue than the increases that we had to implement in order to cover the depreciation. We will be there with this next budget. We will have made it. And Melissa Curry, our finance director, is very, very confident that we can maintain that until this project is built and begins to be paid for.
Right. Because, I mean, a lot of the concerns I heard was that when this finally came to ballot, it was the first a lot of citizens had heard of it, and nobody understood how we were going to pay for it, which is understandable, you know, to resist voting for something when we haven't really explained how we're going to pay for it. So I think we should take advantage of that opportunity now that people are tuned into it a little bit to bring them into the conversation.
And we'll certainly lay that out. In fact, Terry is developing budget scenarios that will take us out to the full five years when we will have to start paying this back. So we'll try to make some projections for you that will show how we'll do this without raising the budget significantly.
What would you like from us tonight?
I think we would like from you tonight, a decision on the alternative that you would like us to continue to proceed. I mean, we have the original alignment, we have campus alignment number two.
Okay. Why don't I ask if there are a motion to nominate one of those options? I'm going to give a motion for number two.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, two absent. So, door number two.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Jason. Okay, I'm going to give them a second to clean up here. The next item is going to be the county purchase of property at 11 Route 7 South. We're going to bring up our sheriff Chad Schmidt.
Thank you for allowing me to come here. And I got to start out by telling you that probably the most valuable lesson I've learned in the last five years as sheriff is that even though you can make a unilateral decision, it's not always the best course of action. So I'm kind of here tonight extending the olive branch to ask for, I don't know if I need a vote to proceed, but more of a consensus that you guys feel that this is in line with the town plan and that you share the vision that I do. So we've entered into a purchase and sales contract with the Carbone Auto Group, who owns the old dealership that Plaisan was in on Route 7 South. The town has since changed the designation of that property, and I'm told that there is a limited use for that property. But in speaking with Dan, you know, Dan is still here, that I would be eligible for that type of, to fit in that sort of zone. So that makes the price a lot more attractive for a location for me. So we've really researched this and done a lot of talking, and I think that the town is going to also benefit by this plan. I've spoken with Stuart. We're going to revitalize the part of town where when folks drive up from Williamstown and North Adams on the southern leg, kind of the first thing they see driving up is an abandoned building, and we want to change that. Property consists of both buildings. The one where Plaisan was, so the further south, is the one that we would relocate our facility.
And just to clarify, this was the research and development department that closed about two years ago?
Correct.
Thank you.
So that's the one that we're going to sort of rehab initially and use as office space. The other one, probably a little further down the road, we're going to do some, something to make it a lot more visually attractive in the beginning, but we hope to somehow convert that so that the police department and I could use that for indoor, inside impound. I think you currently pay for a location up on Burgess Road. We would have you do away with that and be able to use my facility. So I think there are a lot of opportunities where the police department could also benefit. It would help, you know, strengthen our relationship. One of the other things, I've outgrown my facility now. There's, we're coming into the point where it's not ADA compliant. I don't have an elevator. This new facility will all be on one level. So we're kind of excited about that. But I've also outgrown the footprint, the outside footprint, where this has 6.8 acres, so I'll have places to park my cars. One of the other things we're looking at, in the beginning of May, three of my cruisers are going to be converted to propane, which may surprise some of you because of the recent uptick in those prices. But we vision, we see that as it's going to decrease because as natural gas becomes more prevalent to this location, they're going to need to find alternative uses for propane. So this location will also allow me to have a propane filling station. And I've had limited conversations with the chief Doucette, but there is potential where we could expand that to include some town vehicles. I'm going to realize about a 30% savings in my fuel costs by converting my cruisers to propane. So I really think this is a win-win situation, but I think part of the vetting process, I'm obligated to come here and really see what your thoughts are and hope that you share my vision. So, I don't know if you have any questions or comments?
Well, let's talk about the property for a short second if we could. Dan may want to come in on this a little bit. This was, this property's had some grandfathered zoning from car dealerships, as I understand, and it's kind of bounced around. It's down on the south end of town. The one building has been abandoned for a long time. It was just the southern building that was used.
Correct.
So are there any, are there any other concerns with that property from a zoning perspective or anything, Dan? Nothing?
Sheriff and I have discussed this project at length. He contacted me before he even made any real inquiries as to purchasing it. We have discussed zoning. It is a public facility. It is allowed in that zone. Larry McCloud's been down with me to look at the building in detail with Chad Schmidt. And it makes sense from a building zoning perspective. So we have had those conversations. We feel comfortable that Sheriff's Department understands what has to be done there.
Okay, thank you. And Stuart, this is a payment in lieu of taxes property, correct?
Well, in a sense. What will happen if the county purchases the property, it will actually be removed from the tax rolls. And as I indicated in my memorandum to you, the current value of the property is truly overstated at $664,000. I understand that Carbone has obtained a recent appraisal from Brian Audi that shows the value of the property more at $255,000. So we've got a situation where there are town tax dollars that will be diminished if this comes off the tax rolls. Currently, based on our approximately a dollar tax rate for the town, they're paying just over $6,000 in taxes under the current scenario. If it is reduced through appeal, their taxes would drop to around $2,500 a year. The sheriff and I have talked, we've come up with a proposed five-year agreement where he will agree to freeze his transport costs at $20 per hour and 30 cents per mile for the full five years, which takes him through his next term. And I won't add the caveat. And he also, by offering us free impoundment service, will save an additional $1,440 a year from what we're paying for rent now. So the net to the town is about $6,100, which technically could be a savings more than the town taxes that would be generated in the future.
Okay.
And just to add to that, I've had a, part of the purchase and sales contract, I need to have an appraisal done with an estimated value once the, once all the renovations that I'm going to conduct are going to have. And that came in around $366,000. So that gives you another, just another number to try to figure out what the town would lose in tax value. But I think, you know, as Stuart mentioned, we're going to, we're going to try to mitigate those costs by how I can save the town some money, you know, by the services that I provide, so.
Start with Michael?
On the older building that you'll be using for impounding vehicles, what's the capacity?
As far as the number of vehicles?
Yeah.
I think the square footage is around 4,800 to 5,000. There is question on whether or not we can use that, the front old showroom portion. That's pretty dilapidated, so I'm not really, you know, I'm not really sure if we can use that area or not. But I think we can get quite a few cars in there. And I don't know if Chief Doucette, if you have an opinion on that as far as?
Versus today, what happens?
Well, today we have a, you have a, an impound location up on Burgess Road, and I don't know the square footage there, how many cars you can get in, but I think it's significantly bigger.
That's an outdoor facility, isn't it?
It's an outdoor facility that we've had a lot of problems with, with vandalism and things being stolen and things like that. So with Chad, we decided this idea, I thought that this was a lovely endeavor to save some of the costs that we had to pay out for vandalism and things like that.
How close are you to? Did you pick that up, Chris? You got it? Okay.
Chief, how?
If this, we're going to talk to the chief, I'm going to bring him up.
Okay.
Would you mind coming up to Chief Doucette, please?
He loves to do that.
Like last week or four months ago?
Oh, we've already had that discussion.
All right, Chief.
So the answer to the question is, right now, we do have an outdoor impound yard. It's fenced in. We've had a couple of times where we've had to make repairs to the fence, where people have cut the fence. We've had some property stolen out of the impound yard. And this is, this would be a great alternative for us. We'd have everything inside. It's not going to be weathered, and it would be a lot more secure. We've talked about alarming the building and making it a real secure impound facility. So it'll get the vehicles from the outside, and evidence preservation will be key. We'll be able to use the facility to conduct search warrants inside and things of that nature. Secure vehicles inside while applying for warrants, where we don't have that now. So I think it is a good venture for both of us.
My question for you, Chief, is how close are you to capacity currently at the Burgess Road? And do you think, pardon me?
We are, we are at capacity most of the time. Sometimes we are able to settle up a case and move a vehicle out. And sometimes we've had to go in there with a machine and really kind of push the crash vehicles together and make more room. So most times we're at capacity, and sometimes we struggle with insurance companies to come up and move vehicles or get vehicles towed away or whatever. And I think working together with Chad with the inside storage, there may even be a possibility of charging a fee for inside storage if these insurance companies don't come get the vehicles in a timely manner. But that's something Chad and I can work out.
Typically, how many vehicles do you impound at a time? Do you impound vehicles too, correct?
Not as many as the police department, but on occasion we do. But I currently have, I have an inside area right now in my building where I can probably put five cars in.
And Chief, how many do?
It depends. I mean, it depends on the kind of year we're having, significant motor vehicle crashes. A lot of times we're, we have to impound those vehicles as evidence, you know, for pending litigation or what have you. And then sometimes after the criminal piece is done, we're asked to hold them for civil litigation. So, I mean, it really, sometimes we've had vehicles up there for two or three years at a time. So, you know, it all depends. Sometimes we're able to, Eric is really good about working with us so that we can sometimes take photos or video and release those vehicles, but it seems like more often than not, we're asked to hold on to them. A couple of times too, real quick, Terry has been really good to us about letting us, you know, when we take vehicles, for example, from alleged drug dealers or whatever, we've had to use some of his facilities, which they just kind of get in the way. This would afford us an opportunity to make them secure and keep them till we decide what we're going to do with them, so.
Okay, thank you.
Justin, you have any?
I don't. I, you know, I thank you for bringing it in front of us. I appreciate you coming up here and asking our opinion, but I think, you know, really, at the end of the day, it's not really our prerogative to weigh in on it. I mean, I don't think he needs our approval in any way, shape, or form.
Well, he needs us to, if I understand correctly, to tell if, tell them if we have any objections, basically.
I think that's the key. The side judges are very sensitive to the fact that this is town land coming off the tax rolls. And I think they would like us to, certainly not approve or disapprove, but if we don't have any objections, they'd like a letter from us saying that we don't have any objections.
I don't have any objections. I mean, I think it's a, it's an area that's been in white. It's been zoned out of use for the most part.
Great use of the property.
Well, Mother Nature's reclaiming one of the buildings. So do we consensus to write the letter?
That's fine.
Of no objection to proceed?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay.
It's fine.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Chief. Next item is appointments to boards and commissions. We have been conducting interviews for applications to the boards and commissions as previously advertised. We have completed four, got, well, we're through four candidates. Do I have a motion?
I move that we, that the select board reappoint Ron Alderman to the development review board.
That is a three-year term?
I'll second that.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That is five in favor. Unanimous to absent.
Just a procedural question. Those reappointments take effect immediately?
Yes, they do. Well, technically, they'll be taking effect in the next three days.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll move that we reappoint Bill Barney to the development review board.
That's also a three-year term. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous to absent. Okay.
And I will move that the board, select board appoint Robert Ebert to the Board of Listers.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And that is unanimous as well.
And I'll move that we nominate, or we appoint Dan Monks to the regional commission.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? That's also unanimous. That's all we have for tonight on those. Okay, the next item is a, oh, sorry?
I think it'd be nice to thank those people for volunteering to
I think that's a good point.
spend their time on these, on these tasks.
So noted. Okay, we have number nine on the agenda is the Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund. This is a low-interest loan application. Stuart is going to write us through that.
Yes, thank you. We've put this information before you, before, and the last time that we had it before you was just before the bond vote. The board expressed a concern that it didn't want to get too far out ahead of itself and anticipate what the voters might do. And since that time, the state has come back to us and said, look, we want to preserve your spot on the financing list. And in order to do that, we need to act to borrow the $66,000 that would help us finish the design. Part of the work that you're seeing here tonight, we're actually paying out of the current water fund, which is actually, if this is approved and we go forward, it will be reimbursed by the state. And it won't be, need to be paid back until the entire bond issue is determined and begins its payback. So these monies get rolled into the ultimate bond cost. And theoretically, if we do have a positive bond vote this year, we won't start paying them back until 2017, 2018, fiscal year 2018, probably. So this is much like a borrowing that we would see with bond monies. It comes from the state's Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund. The beauty of these monies is, is that they are fixed at 3%. They, in this case, have no immediate payback until such time as we begin to pay back the bond issue. It does require action by the board and signatures by the board. There is a resolution. There's a note. There is a certificate of registration, registration that the treasurer would sign. We don't have that for you tonight. The tax certificate would be signed by the board tonight if you all approve. And the loan agreement is here as part of this packet. This is for $66,000. It is a benefit to the community to go forward with this because it reimburses the water fund for monies that we are now paying out. And once again, we don't have to worry about paying this back until the entire bond payment begins to be paid back. So this is a very low-risk opportunity for us to save some money.
This qualifies us for the interest rate that we would get if we go forward with the bond rather than our current?
It holds a spot.
It holds a spot for us.
And this is just for funding the scope of the study?
It really funds the final design, which is what we've been working here and talking about.
And it doesn't lock us into anything if a bond vote doesn't go forward?
If the bond does go forward, we're going to be faced with, with having to do something in 2018. So these monies will be held in abeyance until such time as we actually move on this project.
Jim, you have any?
No, I don't.
Michael?
No.
Okay. Do you entertain a motion?
One, yeah. What's the interest on this?
3%.
I'll move that we waive the reading of the documents and move forward with the $66,000 fund.
I'll second that.
Okay, second. Any discussion?
Just, so it's being funded right now out of the, out of the enterprise fund for the water and sewer?
That's correct.
And is that coming out of a reserve fund or?
It's actually coming out of our operating costs at the present time. We're not, we're not using reserve funds at this time. If, in fact, this was not approved, that's most likely what we would do, was come back to you and ask you to spend down the reserves, just so we don't put the water fund into a negative situation this fiscal year.
Anyone else? You good? All in favor?
I just, look, I just want to get back to that reserve fund. But we do have the money in there currently to pay that off through the reserve fund without borrowing?
We would, we had not anticipated spending the reserve to do this because it is eligible for funding. If, if, and I don't see Jason has hung with us here. If we don't save our spot by using these funds, I don't know whether it places us in jeopardy of not being in that queue that we would need to be. I can't answer that question, Justin. It's a very good question. Yes, do we have sufficient reserve funds to fund this without borrowing? Yes, we do.
But this, and this money's not paid back directly from the enterprise fund, though, is it? This is going to be paid back throughout the whole scope of the town?
Well, it, well, it'll be paid back from the enterprise fund. I mean, currently, we pay our water bonds from the enterprise fund. But we believe that by the time we get to that point, we will have sufficient monies within the, within the existing budgets to pay this without increasing the budget significantly.
But this, this is, this, but this piece will be paid out of that enterprise fund, not at all out of, out of town funds?
That's correct.
So if that, if the bond vote goes down again, we're just looking to come directly out of the user fees? Out of what?
Well, that's, I mean, if the bond goes down again and the board simply decides to wait until 2018, we would have to talk to the state and discuss how they would like us to approach this.
Right.
We could essentially pay it down using reserve funds and not impacting the budget at all. $66,000 wouldn't take too much.
What I'm just trying to make sure isn't happening here is we were just, you know, we sent it to the voters. They told us no. A lot of people had concerns that they were paying for water system improvements when they don't use the water system. Those folks aren't going to be working to pay back this portion of money at this point in time?
Those folks not on the system will not pay any portion of this.
Okay. That's my question. Thank you.
No problem. All in favor? That's unanimous to absent.
I will, at the end of the meeting, perhaps circulate these for signature by all the board because we're going to need to get all of your signatures done at some point.
Okay, we're up to the Applegate deferralment conversation. Michael?
Good evening.
It's Michael Harrington.
We were before you, two weeks prior to tonight, talking about the request for a second deferment for the Applegate Limited Housing Partnership and their Community Development Block Grant Loan. There were some questions that came out of the board meeting. So I went back to both Applegate and the state of Vermont's Community Development Program. And I believe you have in your packet the response from Housing Vermont along with a memo from me that outlines the questions that were asked at the last meeting. And I think it's a great memo that we got from Housing Vermont, very detailed. Answers all the questions about where the project currently stands. What are the factors that are playing into the need for another year of deferment? And I can share a little bit, I talk about it in the memo, but I can share a little bit about my conversation with the state if need be around community development block grants. Even though they're called grants, why are they structured as loans? And what is the benefit to the town keeping, keeping the loan and having it deferred over time? But I'll answer any questions you have, if there are any.
Justin, you have anything?
Um, you know, I just had a chance to read through this a little bit. So my understanding is the scope of their new project is not looking to expansion, but just revitalization?
Correct. It's revitalization of current properties and most prominently around energy saving. And so what you'll see is they're looking to convert their current oil burning system into a wood pellet burning system. There's other pieces to that too, which include some roof upgrades, some other amenities within the structures themselves. And we've also talked with them about this multi-use path connecting Applegate and Willowbrook.
Jim?
I'm going to just kind of recuse myself because I do sit on the Applegate Housing Board.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
Stu? What are the consequences of not approving the deferment right now?
There's, there's no consequence to the town either way. The, it does put, the significant issue, and it's in the memo from Matt Moore and Housing Vermont, is that if the town does not defer the loan, then the loan immediately comes due and they need to start making payments on it. He also indic-
They face foreclosure.
Right, and, and they face foreclosure because of the current financial situation that they're in. Where for us, I think, the ability for us to defer the loan, which is common practice in community development block grants, allows us to encourage regular and routine development to occur at these sites and monitor the work that's being done to make sure that the conditions stay acceptable for the people.
I noted as I read this that they, they're just, they have a preliminary idea of the cost of the rehab. Did they divulge that to you? I don't recall. I saw that.
They have talked in the range of around $3.5 million.
Okay. And they mention also that they have, that they have taken some severe budget cuts. Do you have any idea?
I don't know what those are.
What the total of those budget cuts are and what line items they come from?
No, I don't. I don't know what they are at this time.
That's it?
Greg, just one question.
Go ahead.
Just to clarify, Mike, when these, when these, this loan begins to be paid back, these funds don't come to us.
Yeah.
They go to the state of Vermont.
We are, the way it has worked in the past, my understanding is they come to us and we turn 50% of those funds over to the state. We are allowed to keep 50% of the funds, but they, you know, it's all based on what the original agreement was set up. But if it was originally used for low to moderate income housing, it must also be used for that going forward. And so it would be monies that, there would be monies available to us, but it would have to be spent on similar projects.
So that, so what's the total due back to the state?
I, I think the total project was around $650,000. So if they start paying that back, half of that would stay with us, so it'd be around $325,000.
And the total term, length of time in which they have to pay it once they start?
That I'd have to look, but I think it's 30-year payback. It was a 15-year deferred. The, the interest, the piece, and it's in the memo, having talked with the state, is that it is common for community development block grants to continually be deferred. And the reason, there are, there's two reasons they're, they're actually in the form of loans as opposed to grants. One is it's, there's some tax implications there that when the community development block grant was first set up, that required it to be in that form. The other piece to that is it allows the municipality to use the loan as leverage over the organization to ensure that continual upgrades and maintenance are being done and that the best interest of the tenants is being held in mind. So at any point, should a property fall into a situation that put people at risk or we felt it wasn't operating appropriately, we could use that loan and call that loan to ensure that it was being dealt with appropriately. So it is common for these loans, one, during a rehab period, to be temporarily deferred while it gets straightened out. But it is also common to see them continually deferred for increments of 15 to 30 years as long as the organization continues to maintain the property and offer the services needed. At this point, I believe they were operating in about a $45,000 to $50,000 deficit at the end of last year, which enters, you know, shows reason for why they're looking to upgrade their heating system. They believe they can save that cost. At a time when the organization feels that it can operate in a cash-positive place, they would be considering the opportunity to pay back the loan. But I think you're going to see, it's going to be a few years before they begin to realize that based on the upgrades that are being done.
And last year, we deferred it for a year, right?
We deferred it for a year. And, and part of that has allowed them the opportunity to explore additional funding sources. And they're currently in the, in the design and acquisition of funding.
Michael?
Last year's deficit was 45K. Do you know of any deficits of years before that?
Uh, I, I could go back and look. I just don't know off the top of my head.
Thank, thank you. No more questions for me?
They are, they are accruing an interest beyond the state, correct?
They, the current loan does not accrue interest during the deferred period. It accrues, so if, I believe in the deferred piece, and I can go back and look at the original year deferment, but in this one, it would be a 1% interest. But they typically do not, they do not accumulate interest over the regular deferred period. So if we were to defer it for 15 or 30 years, and I, I mean, I say that because I think, I want to make sure the board is aware that when the project comes about and they're ready to move forward on construction, it is likely that they will come back and say, you know, we would be looking for another 15 to 30-year deferment on this. They may even look to apply for another community development block grant to help support the, the new renovation. And that's not guaranteed, but it would be common in my conversations with the state that that's typically how they are done.
Anyone else? You're looking for a motion to?
I am because at this point, the payback period starts in May, so.
So moved. Okay. Michael has moved for a one-year deferment. What is your motion?
Correct. I move for a one-year deferment.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, so we have three in favor, one abstained, opposed, and one opposed. So can't pass without a quorum. So the motion has not gone through.
Stu, moving forward, is that, just give me the next step in this process.
You would, we would be in a situation of having to bring it back before the board on May 12th and hope that you can gather that fourth vote.
Okay.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
All right, we have liquor licenses. And you, you folks, I guess, were handed the amended list? Right.
Yes.
And I can quickly circulate that list for your signatures.
Great.
And we need at least four of you to sign it. And then the manager's report.
I don't have any written manager's report, and I know you're all pleased to see that. I do have a couple of announcements. First, the more mundane, and don't hit me, Linda. Hydrant flushing will begin May 12th and continue through May 23rd throughout the community. If your water does come up dirty, just run the cold water until the water clears. Cold water only. If you run the hot- water clears, cold water only. If you run the hot water, you're gonna draw the silt into your hot water tank, which is not a good thing. Second thing, and very good news, last Friday, late, I signed the deed to acquire from donation, the Merchant's Bank lot, we now own it. Merchant's Bank has donated that open property to the town, and as you had voted to accept it, we finally cleared all the paperwork hurdles late last Friday. And then one more piece of good news, it appears that we will have the closing with Al Carroll, uh, at the Carroll Building with Laflamme's this Friday morning, so that, he will be acquiring, we will be acquiring that building for all of ten seconds, and then turning it over to Laflamme for use for their facilities, Laflamme Furniture Returns to Bennington.
For those of, who are not up to speed on that, the Laflamme's Furniture Store, which burned on January third, is hoping to move downtown Bennington, and, and working right now to have them do that, so, welcome them downtown, hope that all goes well. All right, other business. Michael?
I think, I think, I'm sure everybody is aware that the, the new president of Bennington College, Dr. Mariko Silver, was inaugurated on Saturday, and we should congratulate the college and her on that. They've had some interesting meetings between Bennington College and Bennington Museum, and in terms of developing partnerships together that will focus, among other things, on helping to enrich economic development. I think there's a, there's a good recognition on both of their parts, the museum and the college, that they can play a role in economic development here, and I would welcome that.
Very good, thank you. Sharon?
Um, just something that kinda started at our last meeting, when we were talking about our enhancement project on School Street. For some unknown reason, they may have been watching the program that night, but Yankee Trails contacted the Transportation Center, and they brought the little bus over, and that went through the Transportation Center just fine, and last week, they brought the big coach, that also went through the parking lot perfectly, and we are meeting with them on Thursday to finalize an agreement, so they will start using the Green Mountain Community Network Transportation Center. For those of you who don't know, they have daily runs at ten-fifty in the morning and seven-ten at night, that's the two times a day that they stop it, they come into town. So, they will be using the Transportation Center. I'm not sure what the start date is gonna be, but it is out there, so, we thank them for that.
Very good, thank you. James?
Nothing this week.
Justin?
Just back on that wat, on the water piece for a minute, do you know offhand what the reserve in the water fund is?
Uh, for improvements, it's in the range of four-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred-thousand.
And is there a reserve for something earmarked other than improvements?
Uh, we have a reserve that has been established by the sale of allocation, water allocation, and that is reserved for capital improvements. We would most likely tap that as part of this bond, bond, once we get there.
Do we know how much that is?
That is not quite that high, I, I'm gonna guess it's in the range of a hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to mention, we, we had originally told people that we were gonna be discussing the Shire's Housing questions this evening. It turns out that the Shire's Housing Project grant application is gonna need another public hearing because of application issues, so we have that scheduled for May twelfth, Stuart, is that correct? It's scheduled for May twelfth. Okay, so, people who wanna come and comment or ask questions, or, and I understand there's actually going to be design drawings and things like that available, so more information if there was at the first one, so, we'll be able to discuss that and hopefully satisfy people's questions. I also wanted to thank Bennington College, I went up to the inauguration on Saturday, and I had quite a few people who told me that they were excited to see an initiative where the college came down to town more and invited the town to the college more, and, so I thought that was, that was really exciting. We had discussed the review process, we're missing two members tonight, so I didn't wanna get into that as an agenda item. We, we have an opportunity to utilize town staff to do some of the clerical breaking down on that, so, board members, if you have any questions on that, what my, my hope was that we could solidify our own personal thoughts of what we're looking for, so that we could turn that over with some direction and maybe get some headway on that while we discuss policy and process down the road. Anybody have a problem, an objection with that? Okay, all right, give that some thought, and we have reason to go into executive session to discuss a contract, so I need a motion to do that.
So moved.
All right?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll be going to executive session and thank everybody, and we'll see you May twelfth.